This is Zoe Burgess, your city clerk. This workshop meeting of August 1st is being held with a quorum of City of Westlake Council physically in attendance at the Westlake Council Chambers, 4005 Seminole Pratt Whitney Road. Public comments may be accepted utilizing the electronic comment card available on the city's website. Public comments are also permitted at the appropriate time during the meeting. The mayor will call for such during public comment and you may participate at this time utilizing the Assistant's virtual hand feature and waiting to be acknowledged. Please note this meeting is being recorded both voice and video and to remember your mic may be live. I will mute any microphones that carry any feedback or interruptions. If you are a caller that has been muted, you may unmute yourself by pressing star six. Any person in the virtual meeting causing a disruption or being inappropriate will be removed from the meeting. If I may also remind those physically in attendance, please utilize microphones so that the virtual audience and the clear recording of the meeting is produced. Thank you, Mayor O'Connor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I will go ahead and call to order the City Council Budget Workshop, August 1st, 2023 at 4:31 PM. We'll call.
Councilwoman Charlotte Leonard.
I am present.
Councilman Julian Martinez.
Present.
Councilwoman Pilar Valeron.
Present.
Vice Mayor Greg Langowski.
Present.
Mayor John Paul O'Connor.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Excellent. Please stand and join me for the pledge. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to everybody for which it stands, one and every citizen, under God, in his own liberty and justice for all. Do you be seated? All right. Workshop. Mr. City Manager, I believe you have a presentation for us.
Kind of a walkthrough, highlights.
Are we good? We're good.
Excellent.
I'll give you some highlights. This is the same budget that was presented to you on the, at the last meeting to set the millage rates. If you look at page 11 of your agenda, you'll see that the total funding, that is summary of all the general funds, is about 12% increase, expenditure is about a 12% increase as well. Overall, with all the funds at page nine, we have about a $9 million budget, which includes planning and zoning and the building department. The general fund budget is about $5.5 million. If you go to page 14, tax receipts, current year, we received about $3.1 million. Projections based upon the latest county numbers for next year is 4.8. It's about a 54% increase in tax value, revenue in there. So that's kind of where we are. And if everything goes in correctly, based upon our expenses and revenues, we should end up next year with about $570,000 into our fund balance, which will give us funds to do other things. That's if everything goes right. But again, we're estimating, you know, a year to a year and a half in advance, hoping we nail everything correctly.
Right.
One item that is not in this current budget yet, there will be a line item. Basically, probably by October, we'll be moving the location of our meetings into the lodge. So there will be a line item added to the budget on expense side for meetings of about 16K to be able to have all of our meetings.
Is that for the entire year?
Yes.
Why didn't we work that in?
Uh, forgot about it.
Oh, thank you for your honesty.
And basically I'm open to questions and I can walk through any individual item that you have. And again, on the revenue sides, some of the details, we still don't have our estimate for on page 14, the communication sales tax. You'll notice that we budgeted the same 52, 53,200. For next year is this year, but we don't have that number yet back from them, from the state.
Okay.
So we're only using a plug number right now. It will probably be a little bit higher than that, but how much higher, I don't know. The other one is the FPL franchise fee. We're budgeting based upon our prior methodology of the lowest of prior years at the 118. But as you can see in the forecast for this year, our franchise fees will be about 302. So we could safely increase a revenue line item there from the 118 in the budget to probably 275 and be safe as far as estimating revenue. So that line item could go up, which would give us an additional, probably $150,000 in the fund balance. So we'd be more like 600 to 700,000 at the end of next year.
Right.
Which gives us dollars for looking at park, other items, stuff like that, as we can start planning for putting the money away. So we can start doing some things for the park. Questions?
Talk to me about gas taxes and why we are or are not collecting them.
That is something that we're working between the two legals because technically we don't get gas sales tax money on roads because the city doesn't own the roads. Seminole Improvement owns the roads.
But we could.
We're trying to see how we can.
So that's revenue we're missing out on.
Right.
Your single year.
Does Sid receive those funds?
No.
No.
Sid does not because it's a special district. Special districts do not, only municipalities do.
But if there was some kind of interlocal or some kind of agreement, could we?
That's what I'm working with the Sid attorneys and with DJ on to try to figure out, can we? How can we? Will it work? Won't it work? Those kind of things.
Is there like a deadline to have some kind of agreement in place by so that we could start collecting those?
Yeah, it's, was probably five months ago when we had to put it in. So we're still working on it.
Done for the next? I feel like I've had this conversation.
Yes, and we're, it is not a difficult, an easy hurdle to figure out how to do it.
I just don't want to have the exact same conversation again at next year.
Well, you'll either have a, yeah, we can do it, or no way.
And if I just chime in, the revenues that municipalities receive with gas, option gas tax is governed by statutes.
Right.
Is to the expenditures. So as the city manager indicated, the lack of owning roads and right of ways presents us with the challenge. But we are exploring it. So, but we want to be compliant with the state statute because it's earmarked for certain expenditures that Sid can't go into a general fund.
Okay. I understand. What about impact fees? Is that a thing?
No. We do not collect impact fees.
And we can never?
No, we can, we're working on a, trying to think of it, transportation. Yes, me too.
Mobility.
Mobility fee instead of, because you can do impact fees, you can't do a concurrency fees, you can't do a number of others, but you can work on mobility fees. However, mobility fees is one of the things that's being contested. That was the issue with West Palm Beach, Palm Beach Gardens.
Gardens.
Fighting with the county on the mobility fee. So kind of watching what goes on there rather than wasting our time and effort. Because if it goes down in flames, no reason to try to even go down that road.
And we're still paying impact fees?
We're not paying, we're paying road impact fees on every house that's built, but actually developers paying those road impact fees.
The developers paying them?
Yes.
Okay. Because I saw it in here, part of the budget. How does that work if the developers paying for it?
Which line item are you talking about?
Page 14. Oh, that's, that's revenue though.
Yeah, that's revenue.
Yes, that's revenue.
Okay.
We get revenue off the impact fees. We're handling.
We're getting revenue from the houses built?
Correct. We get a piece, when the impact fees go in, we get a piece of the revenue for handling that transaction to the county. There's a percentage that we can take as an administrative fee.
Got it. Maybe let you run through some general questions from the council and then since we have the time, I mean, I'd love to go through the whole thing like. Yeah, let's go page by page. Page by page. But if there's any like current questions that you have, let's go ahead and get them asked now.
Can, last meeting, you mentioned you'll be looking at additional staffer or two.
Yes, yes.
That worked in here now?
Yes, it's in.
And then when's the schedule for the next PBSO deputy?
You all approved them, they should be operational August 1st.
That was the two. Do we have another one coming?
Not for next year's budget, no. Looking at the projections based upon discussions with the major and the captain, adding those two this year, we should be good through next year. We'll look at it as we go into next year's budget to see, depending on the growth, depending on what's going on with how much commercial, et cetera, whether we have to add for the following year.
Okay.
Did PBSO ever get back with, I know that I will come tonight, but about the motorcycle, how much was motorcycle?
I have not seen that number back yet.
I'd like to know that.
Should I go?
Yes, absolutely.
Page 22, under total finance, I guess, or other administrative services really under general funds, page 22.
Uh huh.
Just clarification, contracts administration to Greg's question, is the increase, the one additional staff member? So we forecasted 270, 278,000. The budget for 2024, we went up to 287.
That's only an extra 10,000. That can't be a whole.
No, that's just, that's just a 2.3% increase in the contract.
Pay, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
General government.
That's where we have the extra person.
Okay, because I was gonna say we, okay. That's extra person. Lease for the building, I thought this was tied to us moving to the lodge, but we spent zero this year, forecasted two, but next year we budgeted 86, 7?
Correct.
Is that 41?
No, there's 16 for the lodge, but that lease number that's in there is based upon original leasing of space at the Grove Marketplace. But in next year, probably by February, March, Sid's facility south of the substation will be complete. So the city will be paying Sid some rent for their space. And there will be building, moving, building department, everybody over there into that space, out of the spaces here, which frees up this property is also for development.
So just sorry, Sid moved from where you're located now, you moved to there.
Everybody's moving there.
Pays?
Right, because they'll be leasing space from Sid.
Oh, that would be.
Sid floated a $12 million bond to do the reuse tank and a Sid facility. So as part of that, in order to pay back and stuff, part of the thing was some revenue coming in from space that the city will be occupying within that building.
Hmm, okay.
We've been skating at $500 for a long time.
Yes.
Yes.
Actually, I think he, I think he bumped it to $1,000, but yeah, we've been skating for a while.
This might be a little obvious. But on page 21, contract solid waste, that's just a growth in the city.
Yes.
Waste services.
But more services.
Okay.
But I'm glad you brought that up because I was going to ask when that contract's up.
It's up next year. We'll be going out for bid.
We are going to go RFQ?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, great.
There's a number of things we'll be doing when we go out for that. We'll be of a size that we will attract competitors where before we were not. We will probably do some changes. Right now, the entire city is picked up on Tuesdays and Fridays. The volume is getting such that it's getting difficult to do that. So we'll probably have a Tuesday, Friday, or yeah, Tuesday, Friday and a Monday, Thursday type scenario.
Different sections of the city.
Yes. But we will not, we will not split any community. So all of hammocks or all of, all of a particular area will be picked up on the same day so that everybody's on, on board.
How long are those contracts?
Pardon?
How long are those contracts with solid waste?
How long?
I guess it's part of the negotiations.
It'll be, we'll probably do a, either a three or a five year contract typically is what your solid waste are. Sometimes you go with an evergreen, but usually it's a three to five.
And then we put up for bid when the contract is over?
Yes.
Find the next lowest?
Yes.
This will be the first time that we're able to put it out for bid. Because we're of the size. Because we were tethered to whatever the county was using prior, because we weren't big enough. Okay, we should be able to hopefully get a better deal.
Yes.
That's the point.
Now, the.
And better service.
The bid would be based on most responsive and responsible and not required by law to take the lowest.
Great.
So you look at the quality of the bid.
Yeah, it's important, okay.
And the one thing of the whole, one component that won't change is the disposal fees to the county, regardless of what they are, because they're collected separately. But what will change is potentially we'll be able to hold the line or decrease the collection portion of the fee. Because your disposal is on your tax basis, a separate line item from the county.
Gotcha.
So on page 20, I'm getting there, Mayor.
No, please, this is all very important.
On page 20, the question was, does the increase in the professional legal services include the magistrate? And or do we anticipate an increase in legal hours?
Just, the magistrate would be out of the special revenue fund, out of the building department, not out of the legal side. Since it's directly related to the building department and code enforcement, it would be covered under that budget.
Sorry, just to chime in, I noticed we budgeted zero for outside legal. What happens in the event that we need to, to bring in outside legal or is your firm never have to?
No, we do an occasion. There are specialties that we don't handle.
So is that something we should budget for?
Well, you can budget for it or you can either use your contingency or your fund balance. That's, that's part of the reason why building a contingency and building the fund balance, not necessarily budgeting it every year, but having a dedicated source within your budget overall that you can use for that.
Okay. What's, what's the benefit of doing one way or the other? If you don't, if you budget X amount for outside legal and not use it, doesn't it automatically?
It falls to, it falls to fund balance.
So is there, is there a school of thought there of doing it one way or the other?
Um.
Easier just looking at numbers to not have to have an extra line item?
It's kind of an anticipatory idea whether we think we might need it. But at the same time, you remember that this is our first year on our own feet.
Right.
So that magic number at the bottom, the 570, it would have to come out of that. So fund balance would be decreased by whatever money you put into this line item.
Gotcha. That was just a thought.
So page 17, the big question, city events.
Uh huh.
Are we planning something really? So we used about 193.
That was, that was before July 4th.
That was pre-July 4th?
Yes, the numbers that you're seeing are pre, are June numbers.
Now, what you don't see here is, is funds, you know, sponsorship money for events, but.
So that didn't offset this number?
It did a bit.
It did a bit, but not.
Not significantly.
Not significantly.
So let me ask the question, do we want to spend $250,000 next year on city events? I mean, I don't know.
I don't think we have a choice.
The fourth event ran, ran us, I think, two, 250 something minus, I forget what the exact number was on the sponsorships, but it was only like 20 or 30,000.
A year prior, and this is actually, I'm glad you brought this up because this is really important and I think we do need to budget for this. So the year prior where I was completely boots on the ground, incredibly involved, we raised over $90,000, I believe the number was.
Right.
Just for that event. And I think we probably spent around 110 or, you know, close to it. But I, you know, pounding the pavement, anybody I was allowed to pound the pavement to, I was pounding the, the volunteers to pound the pavement to the people that weren't allowed to solicit the sponsorship from, and we were able to raise some money. This year, I was not able to do so, you know, pulled in so many different directions. And staff has certainly pulled in 10 more directions than that. So, you know, there was, there are people ready to give us money, like FPU and other places that all we really had to do is ask, but there was just too much, you know, not enough bandwidth. What I would like to do is hire some kind of a sponsorship coordinator because there's money out there to pay for these events. And we just have to have somebody dedicated to, to do it, to get it. And then there's a professional person knows how to do it. They know how to leverage the media ad buys with the sponsors to say, you know, we can, we can promise you that your logo will be mentioned at prime time at least three times for X amount, six times for X amount. I mean, there's, I've spoken to some people and there's, there's certainly ways to do it. City of West Palm Beach has somebody on retainer, but that's all they do is coordinate with the sponsors and get the sponsors.
Let me ask you a question.
They get paid, one second, and they get paid a piece of the money they bring in. You know, we left a lot of money on the table this year and that's just because we didn't have the bandwidth or the resources to go get.
Uh huh.
It's certainly something to consider, but I'm not sure how it was that number before July 4th because I know every event and a lot of them are, are net zeros. I mean, eats and beats cost the city zero because of what we charge the food trucks, completely offsets that cost, so.
This includes some of the July 4th that we had to do early. For example, the fireworks was 50, 50,000.
All right, so that's a huge.
The entertainment, the entertainment.
Fourth one.
Well, it's not totally including all of July 4th. It's, it's a good portion of July 4th. I believe the entertainment with the tents and stuff that they provided, I think, was about 52 with, because they supplied the.
Right.
Or that's et cetera, et cetera.
I mean, July 4th is certainly the event. Everything else that we do has been unbelievably fiscally responsible and has, has almost, almost paid for itself. Maybe like, you know, the porta potties were an expense or the insurance that we didn't take into consideration until, you know, some of the events were thrown together at the last minute. But aside from July 4th, the city has been unbelievably responsible in terms of, of events not costing the taxpayers money. And I think bringing in somebody to manage sponsorship, it would be a huge ask.
Well, that's. I know you have a question, but the person that's being hired, would they not be able to also?
That's, we're looking, we're looking at whether that person is an event coordinator that would be full time or whether it would be a contract. There's dollars there in the line item. How we, how we, how we bring that in can be different.
Knows how to do.
Correct.
They're still not going to know how to do it.
Correct.
You know, I, I would love to get somebody on our team that this is what they do.
That's what we'll look at.
So if that person can do that and also event coordinator, because what happened is when we tried to do an event every single time, it's very hard for the girls over there to do their job, to be a clerk.
Yes.
Helping with the event and it's like a big.
It's, it's a major undertaking.
So if that person that we hire can do this and the event coordinator, because we had somebody that helped from Westlake, but it's not like we are paying them, you know? It's like, if we are paying them, it's different because it's something that it has to be done.
What they do.
Exactly.
They know how to leverage the ad buys and the media.
Their responsibility.
More sponsorship dollars, but that's, I mean, you still have to budget.
Right.
For the event, have it in the budget, but these things shouldn't essence pay for themselves.
Yeah. This is, so the digital fireworks, is that cheaper than, and again, I'm just asking, I'm looking for, since that question came up, probably not? I don't know.
You mean the drone, the drone show?
I don't know, whatever.
Laser light.
The laser light.
Bombs bursting in air is part of the national.
I know, I know, I know. I'm just asking, I'm just asking. So.
There, there are, there are, as technology continues to improve, continues to change, it may be that we end up varying from year to year. It may be a couple of years we're doing fireworks, a couple of years we're doing drone shows. It may be, it may be an option depending on where the technology is, where the pricing is, what we want to have, what the outlook is we want to have for the event.
Yeah, because I had the same, the same situation with JP when I did my event. A lot of people wanted to contribute and give us donation, but I didn't have the means to go everywhere and, and take it from everywhere. Everybody wanted to be part of it and I didn't have enough hands.
And that's why we have it, the dollars in the budget for somebody to be on staff, to handle a lot of it. We still make contracts out.
When's the next budget workshop or when's the next budget meeting?
Yeah.
Would it be possible to, prior to that meeting, explore to, I want to know a couple of things. I want to know what that type of engagement would look like with somebody who clearly does sponsorships. I have the name of the person who does it for the City of West Palm Beach that I'll forward over. That's a place to start. I don't know what their contract looks like or if it's purely commissioned or if there's a retainer. I'm actually, I don't know, but I'd like to explore the idea. And then I also want to know if we could break down per event or just events in general, what we took in versus what, you know?
What was spent versus the.
Right, because.
Yeah.
I think pretty much even steaming up until July 4th. And I'll admit it, I dropped the ball on that because I just couldn't do it all.
Wasn't just you, so.
Well, no, I mean, in terms of like bringing in the money, you know?
Well, and then as we've discussed, a lot of times what happens is your first year, you have a lot of larger donors upfront. But when you get into year two, three, four, five, they're going to start dialing back. Everybody's going to start dialing back. So again, that's where the larger ones will dial back, but also you need to bring up more of your second, third tier sponsors.
Part of it, but there is, I left money on the table.
Understood.
I definitely, there's people that I didn't even contact that gave us money last year. We should have taken the donor list from last year and, and maybe one of those people. And a lot of them were just asking me like, we're ready, just let us know, you know, because I've been in all these events and things.
Again, Mr. Mayor, depending on how we approach them, can be problematic for staff or the city. I mean, we can, we can let them know, we can let them know that there's an event, that there's, that there's sponsorships out there that are available. But beyond that, it's kind of hard to really.
Which is also why we need someone who can talk to people. Work on. That's their job. Speaking of hiring someone for sponsorship, what about a grant writer? We're looking at sponsorships and create events, wanted a grant, grant writer to do things for the city.
So many.
I, there is an outfit that I've used in another venue that we can bring forward for a ongoing contract with them. And they do, they do mostly things for fiscal plans, et cetera. However, they're into all of the grants that are available at the state in other levels, so.
Sounds like they're worth their weight in gold.
They are, and their fees are right, their fees are really reasonable.
How much do we expect to pay someone?
They're about, I think, I want to say 38 to 4,800 dollars per grant application, but they carry it through from the beginning and they also help administer it after the fact. And that can be a grant that's $20,000 and I've had grants that they've brought in that are $800,000.
Yeah, it sounds like a no brainer. But we don't have that, do we have, we don't have a line item for that?
Uh, no, not, not at this point in time. Again, looking at this budget with what revenue we can generate is where we're at.
Right.
I mean, we can add these things, but right now there's not really a lot of extra space in there to add them.
Right.
So my thought would be, and again, last question here. So my thought would be, and again, last question here, contingency, if we were to add those items. We forecasted to spend twelve thousand in contingency. Is there? A reasonable? Thought that we could possibly reduce our contingency funds in order to. Offset the cost for some of those items. Not really sure.
Increase the contingency fund, really.
Well, but if you take it out, I mean, I mean, you can increase it too, but.
Well.
Wouldn't exceed your expense, you wouldn't go higher on expenses, because if we increase contingency, then we're increasing our expenses.
That's our rainy day fund?
Typically, your contingency is, is a ten percent. It any, it, it varies on the size of the budget. But some budgets are at five percent, some are seven, some are ten, depending on, on your size and what you think your damage may be, shall we say.
I'm just looking at history.
Do we keep a wish list of what we would like to keep, keep adding line items every year? Um, hey, look, we actually revenue this much. Hey, we're this much closer to maybe which line item would we like to add next year?
Well, the last few years, we've been trying to make sure that by the time we reach this budget that um. My lifeline that we used to have. That we were non-dependent at all.
That's goal number one and we're, we're achieving that, so that's great. We can check that off, that's great.
You know, so that's where we've been very cautious and very careful when, you know, bottom line of what your budget you have is basically it's what. Costs to have the city operation.
What did we actually budget to take from the lifeline and what did we end up taking?
Um, we had budgeted.
I like calling it a lifeline.
Looks like we took twenty three eight, oh, no, that's.
Think our original was budgeting six or seven hundred and we didn't take any.
Which I think is pretty impressive to say.
Yeah, it was seven seventy six and we did not use any.
That's a huge.
Yeah.
That means.
It's, that means we were good on our revenue, we watched our expenses and we did what we had to do. And some of our revenues came in a little bit higher than what we anticipated, which is what you really want to have.
Right.
And great job on expense control, you really did do pretty well.
I mean, that, that's a testament to how, how fast we're growing, but also how lean we operate as a government.
One hundred percent.
It's impressive. Oh, anymore?
I have some.
Shoot.
Um, for optics, city council budget on the, for general fund. Does the city events have to be under the council budget? It just, I'm looking for optics, like, my gosh, the city council's budget is this much. Can we have that removed to another? So it's not in the council budget and just for optics.
I mean, generally, is it, does it fall under city council? Because it's.
It can be listed in.
Budget's like three hundred, city council, my, I don't know. You take that out, our budget goes back down to a little.
One of the, one of the things that we probably want to look at, not for this budget cycle, but probably next budget cycle. Is the particular format you're looking at now. We morphed into because of some pressures to look more like everybody, every other city's budget. But we're not like every other city, because we are contract based with everything. So the format we may look at presenting back to you later next year of changing the format around where you would see. A line item for contract administration or administration and a number. Such and such and a number, more of a line item without necessarily departments, because we don't, we have departments, but they're really a contract. So we may look at revamping the look of how the budget looks on paper. Um, and that could be under its own category of events. Versus under the department of the city council.
Okay.
Right now it's sitting under city council because you all direct what events you want to go. So that's kind of why it's there at this point in time.
Okay, what else is included in the city council budget?
Um.
Council expenses.
Your, your.
Licensing fees.
Licensing fees and subscriptions, insurances for the council, uh, your phones, um, your stipends and stuff like that.
So I get the uh. The emails from the city attorney's office and I know it's being worked on. What is going on with this copy machine?
It's done.
We concluded that matter.
Yeah.
It's still there.
It's gotta be there. We settled it, we can't get a way to pick it up, they said it's ours.
Okay.
So we have to dispose of it.
Is it on the budget?
Yes, we can sell, we can surplus it and sell it now.
Okay.
Add it, add it to the revenue.
Yeah.
Get rid of this thing.
We finally, yes, we finally solved it. I finally sidled the uh agreement last week and sent it back and we'll be cutting of a check for a small amount of money and it's. Done.
Thank God.
Mayor, I have a couple.
Please, yeah.
Um, under revenues, Ken, um, where it's trash bin golf cart, should we remove golf cart fees since we no longer allowed to accept those?
We haven't finalized that.
We haven't changed.
I thought it was against state statute or something.
We are. I saw that myself, I was gonna talk to Ken.
Okay.
I think the ordinance come before you, it's not gonna allow for registration, because I don't see it being allowed under state statute. So I, I don't know what we're charging for, I was gonna talk to the city manager, but that, that line item may come, that may be impacted.
Okay, right.
And then under the federal grants, maybe um added a dash state grants, because I know with, with the park coming online. Um, we can go to, the Florida League of Cities said they will help. Um, Scott, when I met, he was here the last time I mentioned it and he, they will help us search grants and they will work, they'll do it on their, their cells. To get us the money.
Okay.
And that can be on the federal side too.
All right.
I maybe add that there, so, because if we put in certain aspects into that park. Uh, could be maybe a disability portion, maybe it's, maybe it's a STEM, or there are grants out there that can help fund that particular portion of the project.
And that's part of what your fund balance could be do the, for the matching. That's one of the reasons, if looking at it, trying to keep it as, as tight as possible and have those funds so that we can. Do some matching when we need.
That's a good, that's a good point, because sometimes they request some um.
Some of them are a ninety ten, some are fifty fifty, some are ninety five. It all depends on the grant.
Okay.
Okay.
But yeah, I believe we could add a, uh, actually, we could just put it in as grants.
Okay.
The reason it's, the reason it's covered there is um, that is the ARPA funds. The seven, seven twenty four.
We get all of that?
Yes.
Every penny?
Yes, we got the seven twenty four. And that's what we're working on now between uh city attorney and um Sid. To utilize that for stormwater improvements in the park area.
Specifically in the park area?
Yes.
How far is that gonna get us?
Um, should. I don't have the final numbers from the engineers, but it should get the lake filled in and the. Ditch on the north side and some modifications to the rest of the stormwater.
Now, what about appropriations in Tallahassee? Can we? Try to grab some money this?
Create a list and go ask.
I mean. Feel like we left some money.
But, but again. Again, in asking some of the appropriations, they're gonna ask you, do you have matching funds or do you have something to kick into the pot?
Right.
Again.
We have, we've got seven hundred and change.
But if we spend that on. The stormwater improvements that need to be done before you can do anything else at the park, that wipes that out or the majority of that.
Well, stormwater would have to be done regardless, so it's part of the project.
Correct.
So if we present the project for the park. And we have X amount towards the project. You know, why are we, why are we separating stormwater as not being a part of the project?
Because I believe if I remember reading the ARPA. Documents correctly, they give you a list of specifics that that money can only be spent on. Stormwater is one of them, stormwater improvements.
Let's look into that.
Cause you're saying that's part of what the park would need to happen before.
Right, you would need any of this, but you know, it's part of the whole.
But I don't believe you can use it as leveraging for other stuff.
You can't say we're using it to clear so we can build a park.
Correct.
Ah, okay.
You mean, are you sure about that?
From what I remember in reading it, I'll go back and read it again, but from what I remember, there's specific items you can spend it on and I don't believe you can use it for leveraging.
Wow.
If we, do we even have like a, this is the park plan, this is what it's gonna cost us. These are the options for paying for it. Do we have anything like that at the city?
We're in the process of working on that, some more with some modifications. Um. We do need to have another meeting with um the board and Sid. For where we are or where we're at or where we think we're going on it.
What generally is the deadline for appropriations in Tallahassee? Cause all these other cities are getting money. Why not?
You'll have to have it done by December.
Of this year.
When they have the budget workshops throughout, there'll be three or four throughout the county. We need to be at there, any of us.
And, and also, if you can get a local bill, if you get somebody on a local bill, is we'd be really happy.
If we get a sponsor for it, we, we have to come to them with, here's our, here's our wish list.
We need something and if we don't do it now, we're gonna miss it again. These other cities are getting money from the TPA and this and that and, and we're not getting anything.
And on that point, uh, for the stormwater portion, does any of that touch South Florida water management? Cause if it does, we can ask them for some funds to help.
That. No, um, not directly. It's um. It would be used primarily for the existing lake that's there now would be relocated. Um, Sid has already. Dug the two linear lakes along behind the, the uh. Right away. That is sufficient to offset the county's relocatable easement of the large lake that's back in the back. The fill that we have, extra fill from those lakes would be utilized to push into that to fill it so that it would, could be used as a field area versus. A lake. So, and we've already had discussions uh between Sid and the county about relocating it. And part of, the county is uh amenable to it because. Right now they have to maintain the ditch in the lake around it. Part of the deal with them would, if we take it into the linear lakes along the side, which we have capacity for. County wouldn't have to maintain it anymore. Sid would be maintaining it as part of its infrastructure. So the, the, the volume of water from the roadway on Seminole Pratt would go into those lakes versus the other county lake. Relieving a county a responsibility for those maintenance. Also. It kind of makes it easier because I don't have to send them nasty letters about maintaining their property.
Okay, sorry.
What kind of a wish list of things would you all like to see? I know you want to see improvements in the park, like a tot lot. What other kinds of things?
That's its own meeting, but.
But I mean, what I'm saying is, I need that input from you all. As a board, as to direction, so that we can go to them and say, look, we're looking for money for A, B, C, and D. Because that's a consensus of the council, of those are the things we want to go get money for.
I mean, our last workshop on the park, we gave a bunch of suggestions that, and we were waiting on. Staff to take those into effect and come back with them. We had an entire workshop on the subject.
Okay, all the items suggested that, okay.
If we need to bring up the tot lot, again, though, Ken.
Covered. It's gotta be covered.
I mean, I could have a whole meeting just on the tot lot and what we would want on it. Cause I think just throwing a little park together and saying, here's our tot lot, isn't gonna cut it.
No, that was never the intent.
Right, I'm just saying, I'm not saying that you were gonna do that, but I've talked to plenty of parents and they travel to nice tot lots.
Right.
That brings in business. Let's build something worth traveling to.
Agreed. I couldn't agree more.
And if you have any of those pictures of any of them, send them over so we can. So we can, or the names of the parks. Or the, or the, or the, or the names of the parks so that, as we're looking at the.
Ideas that we can look at and designers, and I'm gonna send Charlotte to go take the pictures, because.
Yeah, I'm all over the place.
Perfect, you can go do that.
Hey, Shark Tank, King Wellington, that's a beautiful place.
Yeah, so we just need to take. Right, so we just need examples to help build ours on.
When are you planning on having the next um joint meeting with uh Sid?
Probably in a couple of weeks because um. Probably three weeks because I have a meeting tomorrow with an update with uh Don Herring from where he was from the last meeting. Uh, we've been looking at uh from the Sid's perspective. Um, potentially rearranging how we had originally thought for the entertainment venue and stuff. Flipping it a little bit. Based upon. Kind of what we've had the last two fourth fest. And being able to condense the. Basically taking the um. Entertainment venue from like the northwest corner, moving it directly across between the two entrances. So that the soundstage and stuff was on the west side facing east, which would not interfere with the.
With the food trucks.
Well, and then.
I would prefer that, actually.
It would be facing east, not on the east side, but on the west side facing east. The open field would be between them and the food truck area, which would be spread on the east side. So you have the food truck area, vendor area, open space. Entertainment venue. Parking on the side, parking, potential fireworks up in the northwest corner. So it kind of makes better use of the space and then it can be used more times during the year. It's also um for getting electric to the site. The cost is less because we can pull it up from the um reuse tank facility area. Come in from there to bring the electric up. Drainage is a little bit easier, some other things like that, that the engineers are continuing to look at, figure out. How we can get the best bang for the dollar of every dollar we're spending, pushing dirt, we push it one time, get something that's there. That'll facilitate what we need.
Whatever we do there, I think it's important that we put the infrastructure in ahead of time. To, to improve the part down the line, like the pickleball courts should have the ability to add lights.
Oh, yeah.
You know, we can't afford to put lights in right now, let's get the sleeves in the ground so that one day when we can afford it, we can have night. Pickleball tournament, you know, so on and so forth.
Those are all discussions that um have been had with the engineers in their electrical designs and stuff like that of figuring out how to put in different. Different pipes. We're looking at even drainage. Um, what drainage do we put in right now? So that the fields are. If we have a rain, unless we have a torrential rain right now, if we have it two days ago, it would be dry. So we would not have the same situation as we had on the fourth. So that's one of the things we're looking at is how do we make that field um. Whatever sod or grass we put on it, so it's cut all the time, et cetera, et cetera, maintained. So that you can drive on it, you can have the event on it without having a bigger issue.
I'd like to finalize these plans sooner than later. That way, when we go to propose it, to get money for it, we have a complete pan, a complete plan for it. Cause our last meeting was, what, months ago now?
Yeah.
And I, I think we should have this plan down pat, ready to go, just waiting on money.
So we meet on the fifth and twelfth of September. Do you think we could do something prior to that?
Possibly on the twelfth, maybe or before on the, on the twelfth before, earlier.
Maybe an hour and a half beforehand or. Kind of like today, we came at four thirty.
I think we can have the latest revision and stuff ready by the twelfth.
Charlotte, the park is tiger shark caught.
Oh, it's not Shark Tank. Would have been driving around looking for the Shark Tank park.
Tiger shark call.
Does that have any water features in it?
Yeah.
My recommendation would not to do any water features.
Yeah, but this park is human.
Understand.
Things going on, so.
But, but for, but for operation cost, et cetera, et cetera, plus liability, plus uh. Issues with water quality on a consistent basis, water features are problematic.
All right, do we have any more general budget questions?
Yeah.
I, I have a question. In page twenty one, the contract chair is. are we going to get one more, uh, somebody else?
Yeah, they're coming online.
They're online. That would be, that would be, um, as of August first, we have a total of seven now. We have the five original, we added one back in October, we've added the second one now, so we have seven, which means that on, what they're going to be doing is they're taking two of the officers. Their typical shift is, um, seven to seven. What they're going to do is they're going to alternate two other officers halfway through that shift so that you have basically two people on all the time. Plus, there's also a relief person that can fill, that comes into the place. So some days you may have, and some shifts you may have three people on that are strictly West Lakes.
West Lake.
Yeah.
That's good.
And based upon the number of calls we currently have, we're good for that for a while.
Ken, on revenue, if, if another company would say like Comcast comes to the city, do we get any fees from that, them, when they're doing infrastructure and that kind of stuff?
Um. They would be permitted in the rights of way through Sid, so there wouldn't necessarily be any revenue to the city from that.
Yeah.
There would be, um,
Communication.
Communications tax money that would flow in from them as well.
Okay.
Um, we've been trying to entertain them to come in, but they seem to be.
I've been told they're coming.
They told me they were coming about a year ago as well.
They're coming.
I'll believe it when I see them ready to put a permit together and, uh, get in the ground. One of the things that's going to make it difficult, I won't say difficult, but challenging for whoever comes in now is, um, coming into the communities now, you have all the infrastructure in place.
Yeah.
So they're going to have to bore under every sidewalk, every driveway, every, you know, so it's going to be expensive for them to do that. So they're going to have to make that cost benefit analysis to see, can they get enough doors to do that? You know, getting to the community, that's an easier thing. We've got plenty of room in the right of way, in the trench.
Right.
But within the communities, it gets a little tighter. That's why we were encouraging them to work with both, all three developers early on. Get in the ditch, but they couldn't get out of their own way.
Now, some of the commercial has Comcast.
Yeah.
So don't we get in communication taxes from them already? It's on.
I believe so. Correct, Steve?
It's a allocation that we get. Oh. If. Why that?
Excuse me. Um, Steve Fowler Infomarc.
Um, it's just a workshop. I don't think we need the.
The, um, communication services tax where Avenue is, um, an allocation that we get from the state of Florida um, each month. So I'm, and I'm, I'm not sure what that, what that formula is. Um, I, I, I would presume that, um, with something like Comcast coming in or in any other provider that's not here now, that allocation would increase by, by some amount.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fowler. More questions?
I guess we're, we're keeping the mileage the way it is. I mean, we should be going back now.
Five point one.
That's what we need to talk about. I would love to shave something off for that, just for the purpose of shaving something off of that. I think we could set lower taxes two years in a row. I would love nothing more, even if it's a fraction like it was, I would, I would love to lower the mileage rate, but I also don't want my city manager to kill me. So.
What did we do last?
No, I don't, I want to come back to you later and say, hey, guess what? You all aren't getting paid for the next six months.
I'd be fine with that. I would gladly, uh, gladly sacrifice my stipend.
Last year, what did you shave off to bring it down?
Like a ten, a ten, there's something.
I forget, we, we trimmed, I don't know whether it was contingency or a couple.
Number, it was like, it was like five point zero one nine. I also want to know the difference between this and the rollback rate. Do we have that info yet?
Steve, do we have that yet or not?
All right. We do. Um, I, I don't have it right on the, the top of my head. Um, uh, in the, in the, um, mileage rate, um, 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 resolution that you'll, you'll be acting on next month, that information will, will be either, um, the, the rollback rate, the, um, five point one and the percent by which that, that five point, point one exceeds the, um, military. That we, we've got the, that, that rate now.
Uh, Steve will get it to me. We'll shoot it out to all of you as far as what the percentage is.
Sure, please.
So for, for the council, what are your thoughts if we had two budgets, one where they shave something off and one where they have the proposed, where they can try to tweak something where on the, so the fifth, we have two budgets to look at, one that's less and one that's.
I agree, yeah. My argument is the same as what we asked.
Yeah, we want to.
And I want to send the signal to our constituents, to our residents that we're, we're fighting for them.
But this being first reading, you don't have to decrease it at this point in time. You can always decrease it at the second reading.
But you can get us the information.
Right, we can get the information too.
There's something.
An informed decision.
Steve and I.
Five point one versus five point zero, is that too big of a?
They, at the, at the, the meeting on the fifth, the board is going to be asked, are they, the, the council's got, going to be asked to act on a budget, a, a proposed budget. So I, I, I think if we brought in two, it'd be kind of confusing.
But we can have for you prior to that, what it would be if you reduced it at the final budget, what it would be.
So what are we going to recommend we reduce it from or to, um?
What is the biggest item that would impact the reduction?
Like, is there any fact we can trim anywhere? To be able to send the signal to our constituents that?
No, you're, you're, you're running a very lean operation on all your areas. The only thing you have, I mean, you have your, your special events, you have your contingency, and that's about it. Everything else is what it costs to run it on a yearly basis. It's not like, um, a lot of cities that have, you know, parks and rec budgets, et cetera, et cetera, where you can play and trim with certain things and cut your overhaul. We don't have that.
Trying to remember, what did we do last year? It was like five point one nine.
It was five point one, it was five point one two five.
Yeah. So there's a point two five.
Mm-hmm.
No. Point zero two five.
Yes. Right.
Five point zero five instead of five point one?
Ken, what's the breakdown for, um, on the community services? That's thirty-nine percent of the budget. What's all in that?
What page?
Um.
We still ended up being seven hundred thousand dollars that we thought we were going to have to vote to to, uh, our lifeline for that we didn't end up using.
But it can only be used for certain things, right? Or is that discretion of the council?
Does the life?
Community, community services.
I'm not suggesting we take more money. I'm saying that's how lean we ran and that's how ahead of the game we ended up being.
Right.
So I think we can afford it.
Right, yeah. Underneath.
Budget, or is it, like, does it just, is it ours? Like?
What's that?
Lifeline just in here now.
Lifeline, no. Gone, there's no.
That whole line item.
Yeah.
It's gone.
Wondering if the lifeline stays.
It's gone.
Or, you know, it's here and it's gone.
It's, it's, it's sunsetted.
Okay.
It's gone.
It's, it's.
It's sunsetted.
So I, so I see the breakdown for community service, there is really nothing we can.
Right, and as like the electric street lighting, that's to help pay for the streetlights that every, continue to increase all, every year. As they build more streets, they put more street lighting in. And we cover the cost of the street lighting on the main streets.
I really want to say, present me a budget that's, we're lowering it something, anything, something so that we can, I mean, it's even if it's symbolic.
What is the biggest area that we can?
Let our constituents know that, that we're fighting for them and that we're, we're just barely standing on our own two feet. And there's, but there's, you know, there's help coming.
Goes back to that city, huh?
But if you, if you get into a situation which some cities hit back in oh eight, oh nine, when depreciation jumped into thing and a lot of the values took a crash.
No, but we're not talking about lowering it a significant amount.
Understand, I'm just, I just.
I think the fraction we saved last year was like, changed our budget by like twenty-five thousand dollars total.
Well, um, let the numbers as to what.
So I, I know we can find it somewhere and I'm challenging, I'm challenging you Ken to, to find it. I think we can. It's.
So if the council.
Not about baseball numbers.
Agree to not.
Let's send the signal to our residents that we're here for them.
Charlotte.
We'll see what we can do.
Something.
Under the general fund, city council department, maybe as council members, we can agree not to, and again, this is a stretch, but we're forecasting to be thirty-five thousand this year. We're showing an increase to fifty thousand for next year, so maybe we pull back some.
Maybe you put that down to forty.
Fine, and that's, you know, basically that projection was based upon the number of events you all are starting to attend, et cetera, et cetera. So if you're going to be going to these, we have to have it covered.
Right.
I get it.
Maybe that's where we put our.
But as we continue to grow, as we keep on going out and, you know, talking to our legislators and, you know, it's.
We go to more things.
We go to more things.
Right.
You know, I think we could probably find it in the special events, but, but we got to figure out what that number is. I mean, like I said, I think last year shaving that fraction off, and this is just me from memory only, impacted our budget. There was something. It was not like we laughed at the number, but it, it was, again, symbolic. It was something to let our residents know that we're, we're truly fighting for them and we know that eventually we will get this military down as the commercial comes online, which I'm really looking forward to next year's budget meeting because we'll have so much more there.
With all the commercial space.
Yeah.
Can the expenditure for lease or the copier, is that that copier or the one that's in Sid?
That's the one that's in the main office.
Okay. It's hard to see that was going to be this drop off.
Ken, that, that also includes the.
Toshiba.
Yeah.
So we can, that line item can be reduced some.
Okay, that will be something.
Yeah, so, see?
There's some in here that will be removed.
I am challenging our incredible staff to find a way that we could lower this military, even if it's just another fraction. But again, it's more of a symbolic change, but it's sending the right signal to our people.
And there may be some line items within the building lease that might be less than what we had anticipated.
Yep.
I am looking forward to the day we get this military under five. Now, we're not there yet, but.
It's cool.
It's cool. I'd like to see it happen before the end of my term.
Okay, one more question.
Okay.
Under the expenses, cleaning services, can that be reduced at all? That seems really high.
It will be once we transition to the other building.
I'll go over and clean the office.
Currently, currently they're cleaning three different spaces. They're cleaning this space, they're cleaning the building department space and another space. So that will be reduced because they'll be cleaning one space over at the Sid property. Won't be cleaning this space anymore because we'll be meeting at the lodge. But our lodge, our other expense for lodge rental goes up.
Offset, but that's baked in.
That's in.
Yeah, that will be baked in. It's not in this right this second, but it will be.
Yeah, that's not here yet.
I'm done.
I think you've got direction from the council. Uh, any more questions? We're going to do some public comments. No, no more questions? Comments? No? All right, let's move forward to public comments, uh, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, you do have a public comment from Ms. Jackie Campbell here in the audience. Ms. Campbell? At the podium, please. Please state your name and address. You'll have three minutes.
Jackie Campbell, one, one, five, nine, three, eight Key Biscayne Lane, Westlake. Um, I just, I think Ken answered the question. It was about parks. I didn't see anything in the budget regarding parks. And I think you just clarified that there's no budget
Correct.
for parks for, because of our funding, correct?
Correct, we're, um, I've, I've kind of coined the, the mark is, we're like the eighteen-year-old that just moved out of the house. We got a couple of nickels in our pocket and that's about it. So we've got to figure out how to get some more money to order to do the parks. But as soon as we can figure out ways to increase our revenue or get grants, we'll be spending that on parks.
Yeah, I was actually going to mention about the events budget, but you came up with that, so. Okay, that was the question really. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, any more public comments?
Mayor, receiving no other public comment cards, we'll give the virtual audience a moment to raise their virtual hand. If you wish to make a comment, please raise your virtual hand. Please state your name and address. You have six minutes, or three minutes. Mayor, I have no comments.
There being no further business, I will go ahead and adjourn at, uh, five thirty-seven PM. Thank you all. Short recess until our, uh, council meeting.